Well, call the order of the Wednesday, July ninth, regular city council meeting. First, the thing that's pledged to the lesions. All right.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as well.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda with correct minutes from the legislature district. Overpass call.
I move for approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Pass. Consent agenda, the minutes for the regular city council, June 11th, 2025. Financial reports, city council payable June 2025, city financial statement June 2025, and liquor store profit and loss statement June 2025. Any questions? Is there a second?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Gary. Public comment this time is reserved comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to two minutes.
I just wanted to bring up, we had a lot of ETV traffic this past weekend, I'm sure it's because of the holiday. But they were consistently coming out of the campground, driving circles around the old school, around my house. Some of these look like little kids, look like the adults are probably with them, but you know, I just don't know what we have for supervision of the campground, if there's an attendant on on the weekends or not, but I know I can call it in 911, but I just kind of want to talk to you guys about it first and make sure you're aware of the issue. If you guys have any other questions, that's all I have to say.
Any questions? Paul? Do you have any?
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Or then we'll go live in Carroll County Sheriff's office report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just to give the report for June 2025, totaling 170 calls for service by contract deputies and 68 calls for service by county deputies. And you can see from your reportage, it's broken down by different code types. So extra patrol, detail, traffic stops, business checks, community engagements, on view or public assist, and then paper services in addition to our stone lard and patrol. And just as a reminder, that is a federal grant that the sheriff's office has received, where we do extra checks on critical infrastructure and traffic and narcotics enforcement throughout Carroll County, some of which happens within the city of Moose Lake as well. There was, as you can see, the calls for service broke down and medical calls and assist other agencies. If anybody has any questions on those calls for service or anything else.
Let's see, on here, there's six total adult abuse calls in.
Yes.
There's five of them for Highway 73, are those the same location?
Yes. So I don't have that in front of you, but I can tell you right now, it is likely that is a code specific for what's called through the Minnesota Adult Abuse Reporting Center, so MARC reports, and that is a statewide system, and that is just how we code it in our computer system is under adult abuse. So any of those reports that come into Carroll County, that's what it's coded under. So a lot of those we get from facilities that are mandated reporters. So it's probably going to be either MSOP or hospital or nursing homes. That's where we get a lot of them from.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
I was just gonna say staffing, how far or how close are we to?
Yeah, we're still in the process of, we have four in the background and reemployment process. So unfortunately, that takes a little bit of time to get through, but we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and checking everything, making sure that we're hiring people that are, you know, going to pass their backgrounds in the physical and psychological as we're required to do by the postpart. So it's still gonna be a little bit, I'm getting that done, but we are working diligently through that and hopefully we'll have them onboarded soon when all that is done, and then they'll go through the training.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed they'll all four make it through and through the training and be ready to go in one-person squads and on their own, and then we'll get those spots filled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have superintendent Ford Phil Leitner.
Mayor, Mr. Council, Mr. Rowntz. I want to start, Mr. Bender, to answer your question about campground staff. There is campground staff in the office seven days a week, over the holiday weekend, and we have staff in there for between 10 and 12 hours both, I think Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I mean, there is staff down there, granted, they don't see everything that's happening or what's going on, but...
I'm sure they're busy with other stuff.
They are, but just to answer your question, I just was walking up here and like, you know, I'm gonna answer your question, so I apologize for that.
So I was just hoping maybe you guys can just make them aware.
Absolutely, I could just pass on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll start in the water department. Water department, the month of June, distributed 6.9 million gallons of drinking water. Chemical feed equipment right now is currently being serviced at the wellhouse. We have temporary equipment that is currently taking its place, so everything is working the way it should. It's just time to clean some of those quills and some of that chemical feed that might make... So sewer fund collection system collected 12.2 million gallons of wastewater in the month of June. The, I'm sorry, I messed up here my notes. The wastewater facility had, did finish its June discharge, they ended June, totaling 24 million gallons of wastewater, all the parameters, and I believe that the VCA staff were met and set and they're happy, so that is good there. I'm still looking at it, looking at attending a couple of trainings later this summer or the fall to look at other opportunities we can utilize for additional capacity of wastewater. So that's a huge thing for all of us out there, so still looking into that. Street department, road patching, puddle filling is happening just about every two weeks right now, where we work on some bigger patches here later in the summer. 301 Third Street, we had storms where we failed there, we replaced 61 Airway Lane, we had a storm sewer replacement we did there in this last month. From equipment standpoint, everything seems to be running fine as of right now. Cemeteries is business as usual, campground is business as usual, it's really busy, super, super busy down there. The new bath house is open, so that is good, we're working on some small issues there, but nothing that can't be fixed and taken care of there. Parks, everything else there is running as a chip. I think that is all I have for right now. We have more coming up later in the meeting, is there any questions for me?
Is the park each getting rate periodically?
So it is getting, it is getting drug and picked up twice a week right now.
Great.
Yep. So that is happening.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you. That's the municipal store and department report.
Members of the council, Mayor Wachowski, Administrator Owens. Fourth of July, very busy, the staff did great, it was a great crowd down there, music was awesome. Recently, we talked about having a better social media presence, so we've got some stuff lined up for that, and also looking at different ways to measure some items down there for better efficiency moving forward. So we're doing that as well. I did want to take a minute here and share with you guys an email from Brenda. So there's a report that comes out from the state auditor's office in regards to municipals. So recently, they put out the 2023 municipals, and that's this handout here. And I kind of just highlighted where we are for 2023 compared to some other ones. And Brenda, she gave a lot of big kudos to Maureen, myself on here, sales are up, gross profits up, and then it comes up. Again, this is 2023, so they're a little behind the gun a little bit, but still great information to have, and you can kind of see us compared to Barnum, Pinless, and Inkley, Cromwell, places like that. So pretty interesting stuff. Let's see, looking ahead, tomorrow I'm gonna power wash the building, so that's gonna be fun. And we have a little bit of a break after that, but then we have Rookus coming up, that's on July 19th. Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., tickets are 25 bucks. You can find more details at the mooselakechamber.com. So I highly advise everyone who's listening to log on to do that. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, we have technology department.
Yes, technology department, that's me. Let's see, very busy with the DMV, we have workstations being installed here next week. We're looking at a new translation app for an iPad for them, so they can better communicate with some of their clientele that come in. Having a few quirks with the digital sign that's up, but we're working through that. And then just the same internet in and out kind of stuff, phones were out the other day. We're having some firewall issues, but I'm working with VC3 through all of that.
Questions, comments? Thank you. All right. Next, motor vehicle, is nobody here?
We have the library as well.
Call library.
Hello, I'm members of council, mayor, and city administrator. The second month of the year, the second quarter of the year for the library went pretty well. April and May were difficult months, and then June was a bit overwhelming for a variety of reasons. But let's see, for people coming into the library, April was 1,500 people, May was 1,300, and then June was 1,600 people coming in. So those are all really good numbers for coming into the library. April and May, I had about nine larger programs going on, so there was 97 people that came and attended just those programs in April and 84 attendants in May. June, we only had four programs, but that's because we also had the annual sale, and then I was gone. The annual sale was fantastic. Kudos to all of the volunteers that helped. We had 34 volunteers that helped, some of them were there every day, setting up, organizing books, and then helping us take it down. They worked 463 hours in total on the book sale, and it was very amazing. We got $5,200 from the book sale this year. So each year, we've gained more, it's been going amazing, and we had about 1,000 people come to the sale this year. The vendors say they really enjoy participating as well, and many of them would like to come back again next year. So on a very successful... And then, of course, directly after the annual sale, I got to go to Philadelphia for the annual conference. That was very overwhelming, but amazing too. I learned a lot, I got to listen to some amazing speakers, and I collected books for the library from the various vendors. So I brought home like $1,000 worth of books. So I think with everything I learned and all the interactions with the vendors, it was totally worth it. It was an amazing trip, and I'm still working on a bigger report about it, but I'm good. All right, and then, of course, July is our big month for summer reading program. We have a few programs coming up next week. We have a program about dinosaurs from the science museum on the 15th, and then, of course, live zoo animals, they'll be in on the 16th. And then on the 26th of July, I have a puzzle tournament, so people can still sign up and participate in that. Any questions?
Oh, thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you.
Next, motor vehicle. And the finance department quarterly update.
Mayor. Okay, firstly, I'd like to, I haven't done this before, so just kind of some financial updates and things that have implications as far as finances for the city. First, I'd like to just go over this a little bit as a handout I put for everyone. As of January 1st, 2026, we will be the 14th state to implement the paid leave program. What that is, is it's a job protected, partially paid time off program for eligible employees. The program allows up to 20 weeks of leave per year, and it's managed by the Department of Employment and Economic Development for fee. So this is just for information for you guys to read up on, it's not really anything you need to do, but just something that you know that we're working on and we'll be working with the city attorneys to get it into our handbook and all that good stuff, so stuff that we're busy with. Let's see, next is, we are still working with Eisenberg, our auditors, going through some journal entries, stuff like that. They did request a 45-day extension, which was approved by the Office of State Auditors, I sent that out. So August 15th is now the new deadline for us for reporting purposes, just wanted to put that out there. And it's mainly due to the HRA fire, kind of set them back a little bit. Let's see, we're past the halfway point as far as the fiscal year, so I'll be ramping up some department meetings to kind of let everybody know where we're at as far as budgets go. The Department of Public Safety, their portal is now open, so I'll be busy probably next week in putting all of the PTSD reimbursement claims in. That was a big deal last year, takes quite a bit of time, but I'll be working on that here. And then the deadline for that is the end of July. We'll also be starting next year's budgeting stuff with every, all the departments, so that's gonna get busy real here real quick. And then I'm also working on a holiday comparison report for the campground and for the liquor store. Just getting quite, I'm 90% done with it, but I want to make sure it's done all the way before I bring it forward. And I'll probably dig into committees as well, the liquor committee, and then the park for working on that. Any questions on any of this?
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
City engineer, short Elliot Henderson.
I have a general fund checking.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I do have one request that actually does need a vote. We are still very busy in regards to moving things over into a new account. If you guys recall, that was from the fraud a while back. So I will be asking for a $2 million transfer from our old account to our new account just so we can rip the bandaid off more and get this done. So I do need a vote on that.
Question?
Who wants to make that?
Quite a moment of faith there.
Yeah, it's a leap of faith, you guys trust me.
Do you have account numbers?
I do, I don't know if I should mention them in...
Well, I mean, from the old account to the new account and checking.
Perfect, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Thank you. All favor.
Aye.
Oh, Gary. City engineer report, short, Elliot Henderson.
Yes, so in the packet, council received the monthly meeting minutes. A lot there, but making progress on a lot of different aspects on city projects. One thing I did want to mention, that is an update from the meeting minutes provided, is the Minnesota Office of Civil Rights did approve Senate's bid. And so Senate has been awarded the bid for U Trail project. There is a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, the 16th in the morning, so we will have city representation at that pre-construction meeting. Construction start date is still tentatively the third week of July at this point in time, possibly the fourth week of July, but final completion has not been pushed out, so we're still looking at the end of October for a final completion date. We are happy to get that project moving, it's been a couple of years in the making. Just want to remind everybody that that project is funded with grant money, and so we will be working with all of the different agencies affiliated with the TAP grant and the DNR grant received in order to facilitate the reimbursements for the city and also the project facilitation from a fiscal standpoint as well. Everything else is pretty cut and dry in the meeting minutes. If you, as always, if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Other than that, we will cover some of the other items in the engineering minutes later on in the meeting.
Any questions? We'll go to the Moose Lake area chamber cameras, monthly update.
Hello, everyone, my name is Penny, I'm the president of Moose Lake Chamber, and I just want to kind of go over some of the events we have for this summer. We just recently had the Kenny Parade, and we think we had, minimum we knew we had 150 because I think we gave on as a chamber, and we ran out. So that was a safe location and a good turnout, there were about five different vendors locally that were there that had little tables and whatnot. So everything turned out great, so thank you for all your participation with that. Fourth of July, this was the first time Michelle, Lori, and I had done the traffic control. It was a learning curve, but it went really well, nobody was hurt, so that's always what you want to see going. But everything went well. The only thing we did find out is that people, when they registered, they didn't tell us that they might have two, three, or four vehicles coming, so that made a little hiccup for us. And one of the biggest concerns I saw with the traffic coming at me two different ways, I had the people coming from like shore, they had pieces of paper with the number of their booth, but it was laying on the dashboard, there's no way I can see that. So it was very difficult to know how many people were actually together, because some of the booths, you wouldn't know until you get on top of them. So that would be my only takeaway for next year, is a different way to market like their license plates or something with a number. So if they have multiple, they all have the same number. Something like that would be a great, great help. Annual raffle tickets, we have them printed. It is a gun raffle this year, and the drawing is going to be on October 8th, it's a squirrel cage following our board meeting. So if you see people out asking if you want to buy some tickets, it's all about this chamber kind of growing fund, because we've had a few hiccups this year, and I'm gonna talk about them as we go. But that is a very large fundraiser for the chamber, okay? Agate Days is the 19th and 20th, everything right now is going smooth. Lori is gonna be working with Phil regarding the parking setup for marking everything. I believe they'll be doing that probably on Friday. Along with that, we had originally had somebody set up to help with parking. Something seriously happened within the family, and they were no longer. So we reached out to many different organizations to see, and kind of put a little cry for help because it's so last minute. The football team and robotics are stepping up to help out for the whole weekend. So I do know that we, Gem and Mineral, are gonna be donating some funds towards them for their assistance. And then Brew Fest, I know Phil had touched on that, and we do have, I think we have somebody who's gonna be helping out with hauling all of the chairs and tables that we need for the event. And then Nine and Die, we are full at 22 teams, this is the first time we've been this full this early. And right now, the Chamber and Nine and Die are looking for donations. So that's the update there. And then the Moose Lake Triathlon, I know it's been touched on, but I guess it wasn't clarified with the city. So we had to cancel the triathlon this year. We have very little participation as far as people, we had 16 people, usually were sitting close to 40 at that time. We also found out there are three other triathlons in the local area, they had as well had to cancel, too low participants. So the letter went out to all of the participants who registered, they all got their refund. So for the sponsorship, Michelle has sent an email out to all the sponsors this morning asking them if they would like a full refund or if they would be willing to move that sponsorship to another event such as Agate Day, since Stampede is now costing the Chamber a lot more money and whatnot. So that's all I know right now as far as how that's gonna flow. And then we have the bingo, that's gonna be on August 23rd at the Barnum Uni. And so the time and everything is going to be announced very soon. It is not gonna be a purse bingo, it is going to be an adventure bingo. So we're gonna look, reach out to a lot of outfitters in different places, Airbnbs, people who own places, just to kind of keep it something different and bring out everybody, not just women for person. We want to get everybody involved, so. Any questions for the Chamber?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the motor vehicle department, department really report.
I'm sorry, guys. We're a little hung up back there.
All right.
Well, good evening, everybody. As you, if you walked to our office, you know that was really busy lately. We've hired our new employees, and it's all going pretty well. Lots of training to do, we have lots of stuff going on still with them getting into certain programs for us, answering a lot of questions. We will be doing some fraud training with them pretty soon online, and also getting them into practoring exams, and we need for reply from the state to be sending the paperwork, but they haven't gotten back to us yet. And they also have to do a little bit of training on that before they can fully start practoring exams. So we're working on deposits with them. The next thing they'll be doing is the passport photos, and also working on some crash reports and DL and motor vehicle records for customers also. So there's still a lot to do. I may have been here probably, is it like eight weeks ago? Yeah, yeah, so it's all taking some time, but it's coming along. And then after their six-month period, they'll be taking title certification class test with a point five field representative and regional representative from Duluth. So then I'll have to, and it's an open book, so it's not a production, it's not a press sale. We will be getting ready for giving a couple of computers in our office next week, and just hoping all that goes real smoothly. I think they have, they should have a dom pad now, CW, so getting all our programs on there. And let's see, starting in August 1st, we just got a legislature brochure. That said, a lot of, some of the things that we do for free and around us, well, we will be getting paid for. It won't be immediate, the state will be dispersing those funds, and they could either be anywhere from $2 up to $12 depending on the transaction that we're doing. We all, we survived the May 7th deadline, talked about that at the last time. We still have got a lot of people coming in for them. I thought it would slow down a little bit, but that hasn't. And they're running like three months behind, we're fully getting on that right now. So we've got people coming in and checking on all these sites. Me and Tracy will be going for a tour in Rest City prison to watch how they make license plates. We really wanted to do that. A deputy in the city is going on a pugilist. I set it all up for whoever wanted to go, and if it got canceled, it was supposed to be sooner than this. And then they were having issues at the prisons, so now we're able to go, and so we'll be going on the 21st. It's gonna be interesting for us to see them, after working with license plates all these years. So looking forward to that. You guys have any questions for me? I guess I wanted to say thank you to Raymond has hired a couple of employees. It's gonna add depth to our office, and looking forward to getting them all up and running and feel confident, and yeah, and hopefully that'll happen. And I just think it benefits our city to have people being able to come into our office and from all over the place. and from all over the place, so I appreciate it. I guess that's all I have.
Any questions?
That's all I got too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Next, we'll go on to previously discussed business. Gardener, M. Avenue beautification.
Well, I'm not the city gardener, but I am here speaking as a gardener tonight. So I guess the big one is I did believe, I do believe we received some grant paperwork back from the DNR for the MRL dash program, so we're in the process for submission of that and then returning that to them. And then the other thing I'm getting a lot of, a lot of comments and questions about is the Elm Avenue beautification plan, right? So after Agate, I'm thinking it's going to be, in order to do this, the way we need to do this, we're going to have to shut the street down. So if we don't shut the street down, we'll shut it, we'll have to shut it down in segments, which will take way longer. Doing it that way versus having a couple of people, staff members coming on Sunday, right, just doing this and being down with it, pulling one shot. The administrator and I have been in contact about that, making a plan for that. Let's put it to be happening the end of July, beginning of August. We'll do one follow, we'll grind out all the stumps, we'll prep the few places where trees are no longer going to go for concrete, we'll plant trees back in the existing places where trees are going to go. And then I believe if Renee has the planters ready to go, we'll just pull up on the whole wall at the same time. So I think nobody wants to work on the weekend, but it's just going to be the most cost effective thing for everybody just to get it done and get it over. Just an update on that because I haven't been getting some questions on that. That's all I have.
Questions? City Moos Lake ordinance amendment discussions.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Chalkstein, Commissioner Owens. We have been talking about ordinances that need to be submitted to the state court system in order for the city to cite them and have them pulled up should they escalate to court. In order to do this, we need to submit these to our city attorneys. This is not a cheap process and it's not a fast process. So we have identified six ordinances. The nuisance ordinance, use of public property, the pet ordinance, zoning ordinance, traffic ordinance, and the ATV ordinance to submit to the city attorneys for review and then subsequently submitting them to the state court system to be recorded. We have discussed splitting these into two groups of three so that the city attorneys can focus on three at a time. The next step is to continue to, the first three that we're going to prioritize, the nuisance, the use of public property and the pet ordinance, is to make sure that we have everything in there before we submit them to the city attorneys. We don't want to submit them to them, have it take several weeks for them to come back and have us make more changes. We want to make sure we get everything in there once. So at this time, we are working on making sure everything that we need is in there prior to submitting them to the city attorneys for review. It was considered that possibly it would be worth combining our livestock ordinance with the pet ordinance so that when we submit that to the state court system, that's all included in one thing and then citable under that ordinance. In addition to that, with our conversations with the county attorney, Lori Kettla, she indicated that in order to cite ordinances, it's important for the city to have a board of appeals so that if somebody wants to contest a citation, we have a process in order to, they have a process to appeal it. So that is something in addition that we would be looking at establishing. Mayor Chalkstein also recommended that the city adopt the DNR's open burning laws. This would eliminate the city's need to have an open burning ordinance of our own and obviously would make it consistent with all of the other laws in the area. So if there are any questions, listen and I can try to answer those, but as of right now, we're just really trying to get them ready to submit to the attorneys and then we'll go from there.
Any questions?
I guess I have questions about nuisances.
Sure.
What all is covered under nuisances and...
I would have to look, but I know that there's noise in there as well as like exciting yards, having vehicles and things in your yards as a visual nuisance, engine braking, things like that. But I can send you the ordinance if you'd like to read through it as it is now.
Would sidewalks fall underneath that? Sidewalk shoveling and ice?
I think, I think it might. And I believe that parking after a snowstorm falls under the traffic ordinance, but sidewalk shoveling falls under the nuisance ordinance, I believe.
Okay.
So.
And then do we have a timeframe for that because I believe the nuisance one is why a lot of people are here.
Yeah, so my, my goal was to have that done this week, fourth of July, if you mentioned that. So I'm hoping to, now that we kind of have a little bit of a break between fourth of July and Agate Days, hoping to get those first three done next week.
And then we still have three months generally because don't you have to read the ordinances?
It's not a requirement that ordinances are, go through three readings. It's been precedent for the city and what the city's always done. We have engaged with the city attorneys on that particular question. And as long as you're following, you know, the public hearing process per se for reading and reviewing with ordinance approval, three readings are not necessary, but it is precedent. So that would be up to council to decide whether or not to modify away from the three readings that has been previously established.
Definitely could with the nuisance one to help all of the neighbor dispute.
One thing too that we've talked about internally from an administrative perspective is we are amending ordinances versus creating new. So a lot of times when you're creating new, you want that three month process in place to give everybody ample time to review, weigh in and analyze and assess. With these amendments, it's a little different than approving a brand new ordinance and so that would kind of lead into the one, you know, a one month turnaround from a council perspective.
Any other comments or questions? Rob's got something.
I was just wondering if there've been any changes to the pet ordinance since the last time we talked about it?
There has not been any changes at this time.
To which ordinance?
The pet.
Mr. Bender is on the list as, and prioritized with the first round. That's going to go to the city attorneys, but no formal changes have been approved since the last week.
Yeah, that's all I wondered. I, I do have a question about it. Has there been any discussion amongst the council or even with the police department as far as enforcing these ordinances when that time comes?
So our discussion with the sheriff's office and the county attorney's office in recent months, these ordinances are citable as it stands. What we're trying to do in the background is build up the foundation to ensure that they, they won't be thrown out by a judge along the way. So with our ordinances comes the fines process and so with non-payment of fines, then it escalates throughout the court system at that point in time. We want to make sure that everything's buttoned up and that we have utilized the state court system, which is not something that has occurred in the city, to then have everything shored up in the background to empower and give resource to the county attorney's office to then be able to prosecute for non-payment of fines and things of that nature. So we're trying to build the foundation in the background to make sure that not only can they be cited, but they can be enforced utilizing the system as in totality moving forward. So they are citable as they stand. We're reinforcing the background.
Yeah, well, and I, and I understand all that. I think, you know, we talked about like finding out how many pets somebody has can be difficult, like be a challenge. So that's what I was wondering if there've been any further discussion about how that process is going to play out? Because it's going to be a tough one. I know we talked about it.
Correct. Discussions are ongoing. It is absolutely on our radar and I appreciate you bringing it forward again.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Home Run Club request.
Just turn this out, right?
I don't remember.
Okay, so I guess I will. At the last city council meeting, there was a, right? Right? Yeah?
Yes.
There was a request that that big is at Little League Twilight Field. I believe that had, we had consensus to that, right? So that's all good?
Correct.
Two days later, Home Run Association asked if they could, they want to upgrade them and put concrete floors underneath them. They would be paying for this and wouldn't be a city expense. Just wanted to hear you guys' consensus on that change before they just go up to that.
Would all of our city assistants want the concrete?
Nope. It would all be done, everything for, for labor and for materials would all be on Home Run Club. But since it is changing versus what you guys saw originally, just wanted to raise this to you.
This topic was brought up at the park board and the park board made a recommendation to the city council to approve the concrete addition to the batting cages.
We have consensus, motion to approve.
Something like a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Further discussion?
Just oversight, I mean, we're having somebody who work for the city on behalf of, we're going to own it. I, I have concerns about that.
My, it's my question to what happens when it breaks up the liability of...
What happens if it's too high and someone hurts themselves? Is the city's liable?
Yes.
So I think there should be some type of oversight or some type of approval.
I think a maintenance agreement on a project just like this would be a wonderful thing for the city to start implementing. We can draw that all up, just like every one of these other little projects we have in town, we should have maintenance agreements on them. Completely agree, spells out who's liable for what, who does the work, when something happens, who's in charge of preparing it or fixing it? Because otherwise, all those expenses right now are falling on you guys' tax burden and it's happening everywhere in this town. That's just my opinion.
Any other discussion? Would you entertain adding to your motion a agreement, maintenance agreement with the Home Run Club?
Yes.
Paul, did you second that? Would you have a...
I, I...
Chris, would you add, second that? Any further discussion? Home favorite?
Aye.
O's, carry. Fence discussion.
Can I start this one too? Okay, so this also came up to the park board from the same organization. There was a request that the city repair some of the damages to the outfield fence, backstop fence and the outfield fence, first, the third base fence and the backstop fence. So essentially what they did, I, I wasn't sure how you guys wanted this. I also wasn't sure how, how much, what we had for finances to make these repairs. So I had to break it down as far as first base, third base and backstop versus, yep, full fence. The Home Run Club is asking that the city make these repairs on the city owned field. One repair, I only did get one set of quotes as the Hockey Association, the Home Run Club is going to be having additional work done by the same contractor. So this is probably going to be the best thing for the park board to get to. Two quotes, one was for the first base, third base and backstop fence. That was for, how do I got to find it?
Twenty-five hundred?
Sure, yep.
And fifteen to the second.
Correct, but I can't remember which one's which. I, I just totally, there it is. Home Run, Home Run fence was 1,500 and the other one was for 2,500. So this went to park board Monday night and it also went to park board the month before. Got table at the park board meeting the month before until we found out what types of money we had left over from the beach house renovation, which there was approximately...
Ten.
Ten thousand dollars left. So with that being said, this is what the park board has decided they would like to settle this. Walt, do you want to add anything from the park board meeting?
Not really, I think it's all, I think you've covered pretty much everything. There's a question right there.
Is it, are we talking, the repairs are requested, does that field across the street from Miles?
Nope, that's the old base, the little league field behind, more behind than that. That's... I'm sorry, yes, that's the one, thank you.
Any other questions or motions? Further comments? I believe there is money in the budget, that we could do this, correct?
Correct, so an assessment was done based on the park board's inquiry on where the funds would come from. So after, after it was tabled in June, it was brought back forth in July and then it was determined that we are coming in under budget for the beach house renovation due to public works doing a lot of the work in-house. And so there was an additional $10,000 in capital in savings and so the park board then made the recommendation to council to utilize some of that savings to fix these
I'll make a motion that we approve this. The two quotes. Any further discussion? I just think maybe it's an issue with the fences. Oh, I don't even...
It is heavily used too. I mean, it gets, this provides a lot of fun for the, for the kids.
All favor?
Aye.
O's, carry. New business, Straight Line Survey quote discussion.
So what council received in their packet was a map and a quote from Straight Line Survey. So the city received a request to determine if a newly installed fence in the alley is on city property. And so the city maintains the alley, the alley does not go all the way through. The area that we're talking about is essentially the alley that goes between Seventh and Eighth Streets. You can see on the map provided, the gray GIS outlines which are not exact, but end at the boundary of parcels affiliated with the properties at 220 Eighth Street and then 135 and 129 Seventh Streets. So right behind each of those residents in the back is the alleyway and the point of, point of the request that the city received. Again, the city does maintain mowing and snow removal in that alleyway and so we've just been assessing it for the requests that the city received to establish the alley boundary and property lines. Superintendent Edner did obtain a survey from Straight Line Survey and that quote is in the packet. The total amount for the establishment of the approximately 150 feet of the existing alleyway as plotted came in at $1,000.
Any questions, discussion?
So from the Public Works standpoint, I mean, I, I get what's going on here and it's unfortunate for everybody. For this to come to the city, the city has a prescriptive easement that runs down that entire water vein, whether there's an alley there or not. There's a break, there's a repair that's needed, we're going regardless. It doesn't matter if, I have a survey or not. You have a prescriptive easement, it's based over a utility that has been in service for exonerations and if this has been there way longer than that. From, from my standpoint, I don't need this survey to go in and go out. We have all the authority to go in there and fix that utility, so.
Did you say this was a newly erected fence or...
There has been a fence placed up the... Um, there has been a fence placed up the end, or potential end of the alleyway by a property owner. Um, and so, there are questions coming in, um, from neighboring properties about whether or not that fence has been erected on city property, in the alleyway. Um, we know about where it is, um, but in order to know definitively if that city is approaching, or if that fence is approaching out of the city property, we would need to have it surveyed.
Can you put, tell me the, um, number or whereabouts of?
It's a map.
Well, I'm looking at the map, I don't know if that's the...
Where the fence is? So, isn't the question, when they put a fence in an alleyway, they have a survey, we have that fence removed? Is that, is that the question?
Essentially.
Otherwise, gotta leave it as is?
Um, if we have to go and repair a water main, it's coming out.
Yeah.
There's, there's fences all over our alleys, prescriptive easements rather, uh, throughout all of town, and then the understanding is we have to fix the water main, we have to fix the utility, we don't do a water main repair. Um, this is more of a neighboring dispute, and that's where this is coming from. Uh, I know, um, a couple residents came to, came to us and asked for hostile looking for this. This is on the table.
So, Ben just said he would do it for less than a thousand dollars, right? And then...
Yes, oh, sorry. Well, we can answer Louie's, Lou's question, the quote is for
Quote is for one thousand.
No more than a thousand.
No more than a thousand.
Yeah, so, and I got the same quote. Um, this is the same homeowner that erected the fence in the, or the, the tent in the alley last year. Uh, we were having a lot of issues in our neighborhood when that tent was up. I don't know if you guys remember that, we had cars that were being broken into. A lot of garbage was all of a sudden appearing in the alley that we're cleaning up. Um, I've been using that alley for the last thirteen years, between the neighbor's yard. Um, he's been paying me for thirteen years to do it. And so this is really impacting me because now I can't utilize an alley that I've used. So, you know, I, from what I understand, there is the option that I can pay to have the survey done. Um, if I, if I pay to have the survey done, I'm gonna be suing somebody to recuperate that cost. Because I shouldn't be paying for a survey to prove that the city owns the property, and I shouldn't be paying for a survey to prove that the neighbor put a fence in the alley. So that's, that's where I'm at with this. I'm, I'm the one that requested this survey because a survey has to be done in order to deal with this person. I don't want a tent back there again. I'd like to continue to use the alley, like I said, if I've been doing it for the last thirteen years and maintaining that property. So, that's, that's why I'd like to see this, uh, taken care of.
Was there a permit for the fence?
No, permit is required for a fence under seven feet.
If it makes on city property?
So, we don't know that it is. It, it's very close to the property line, and, and I asked public works to go assess and, and and determine where they mow, where they plow. It is really close, but we don't know exactly.
If, if you're the person building the fence, what kind of responsibility do they have to find out where the property line is before they build the fence? I mean, you just can't go out and take a guess where your property line is and build a fence, and...
So where the fence, the line of the fence goes, it does, it, a majority of the fence is in between two private properties, not on the alleyway. There's only one small section of the chicken wire fence that cuts potentially at the end of the alleyway. The only involvement from a city perspective is whether or not it's exactly on the alley boundary at the very end or not. There's other area, the chicken wire fence extends into other areas, but then it's a, it's in between two privately owned properties that...
So, let me get this straight. Is it crossing the road at any point, crossing the alleyway?
It is, because our alley ends at the end there.
So it's, so it is.
It, it may be crossing the alleyway.
It may be on their property.
Correct.
Is that the very, very end, correct.
So when you look at the map that you have there,
Mm-hmm.
And you see the end of the alley on the west end of the, the west end of the alley, that fence is roughly fifty feet into the alley from the end of the alley. Because the, the alley has always ended at, at the west end of one-thirty-one Seventh Street, and then, the, the neighbor across the alley has three different lots, so it could be her first lot on the east, that's always ended at the west end of that lot. Which, and there's a telephone pole at the end of the alley too. Uh, they just replaced it, but the old one is great, and pretty much dead on where I would believe the alley could be, be ending at. Uh, and that's, and I know all the utilities are in there too, like Phil said, because I watched them replace all the gas lines years ago. Well, yeah, it's, it's, the fence is cutting off about the last fifty feet of the alley. That'd be my belief.
That's what the belief is, but we're not sure.
The other, and the other section of fencing, it's, it's either in the neighbor's yard, or it is actually running up the alley then. It could be, who knows, a foot or two in the alley, I don't know where that line is either. But, and then it runs another, I don't know, another twenty, thirty feet into the neighbor's yard.
And this is just, yeah, it's me, a chicken wire, it's just a?
Chicken wire, some metal stakes. I got videos of the three people that installed it. I know, and I can identify them all and who they are.
I, I have had contact with the property owner with whom erected the fence. Um, I did communicate that, um, the city does have a prescriptive utility easement, an alley easement. Um, if, if accessing public utility was needed, that it would be done so, um, at the owner's expense of the fence removal and potentially damage, um, of, of the chicken wire. Um, we do have other locations in town that exist. Uh, we do work with other residents in the city from a prescriptive easement standpoint. I did ask if the property owner was going to engage in a survey, um, because the fence is supposedly outlining that property boundaries. Um, and the property owner was entertaining it, um, but had not engaged in it yet, at the time that I spoke with him.
That's kind of my feeling, that if you're gonna build a fence, you need to make sure that you're building it on your property. And the only way for the property owner to know that is to have their own survey done.
That would be done by ordinance, and we don't have that enforcement.
Correct. I would like to point out too, that the city, that the city staff isn't comfortable saying definitively whether or not the fence is on the property line, because when you look at the GIS, there are a lot of lines that are going through houses and whatnot. Um, so if we're trying to eyeball it based on that, there's no way for us to, with human error, eyeball exactly where our property line is without somebody surveying it professionally. So initially, there was a request for the city to contact the property owner and ask for removal of the fence, and, and that, that can't be done, um, because we don't know if it's, it could be entirely on their, that property, the owner's property, type of property.
Well, it sounds like to me the only way that we can find out where the property lines is if there's a survey then. Then, but who's responsible to pay for that is, is the question.
I do have concerns over setting precedent. And, not that I don't want to assist all parties in rectifying the situation in the way that the city can engage, but in my role and my chair, I do have to be cognizant of precedent, and that is a concern of mine. We do have prescriptive easements that are infringed upon with fences all over the city.
Yeah, that happens in a lot of places too. And, most people realize when they do that that there's possibility that whatever structure they've erected can't be taken down at their expense. So, going beyond that to do a survey done, I I don't know about that either.
Can I ask for another question?
Yes.
So, your concern is, is you, you help somebody out when you get on the alley, or what?
I am the caretaker of the property next to mine, that's one-thirty-one Seventh Street.
Okay.
And I, like I said, I've been using the alley for thirteen years, maintaining that property, I keep the, the brush, the bushes in the back trimmed up.
Okay.
You know, so the power company doesn't have to deal with my keeping trims, they're not hitting the power lines. I just, and that's the kind of stuff that I've done. I gotta get back there, and it's nice to be able to drive back there if I gotta haul a bunch of brush out.
So...
So, these are the things that I can't do now.
It's, it's not even wide enough for like a vehicle to pass you there? And I guess I have the other...
Well, the alley's only sixteen feet wide.
Okay.
Uh, but like I said, she's, she's blocking off the end where I've been accessing the neighbor's property, you know, to maintain it. So I realize I'm the only one that this is impacting, but at the same time, uh, you know, getting the survey done will fix some issues that we've been dealing with, like I said, with the tent. And you know, and, and it'll hopefully stop some of these shenanigans.
This lot, the owner of lot one-thirty-one, are they, do they live there, or they?
Yep. Oh, oh, one-thirty-one, no, no, Ken doesn't live there.
Okay.
No, he, uh, he lives in Birdsville.
Okay.
And he, you know, if any of you guys wanna call, talk to him, I got his number, he said I can certainly get it to you.
It sounds like that's another ordinance we should be looking at then, as well, because we're, we're going to be running into this, you know, the fence, the fence type deal.
Use of city property. So, use of city property is one that's been identified. Um, and so the fence placement would be, um, could be addressed on that use of city property.
That, that would be the big one, is that should be approved by city, city staff possibly.
Yeah. There, there used to be, I don't know if there is, but there used to be an ordinance that said, you know, your, your fence had to be six inches in from your property. So, I would assume if you're gonna follow that, you'd have to have a survey done, so you know where to put. But I, but I don't know that, that, that ordinance ever, you know, specifically addressed that you had to get a survey.
Yeah, that, that doesn't sound like it.
There, so there's no ordinance that exists that addresses fences, or?
We do, um, we do have verbiage, um, zoning and use of city property. The problem is, we don't know if it's on city property or not.
Well, I guess I'm going back to, uh, Councilor Lawler stated that if you're gonna put a fence up, I figure it'd be on the party putting the fence up to have to know where their property is.
And from their perspective, they are on their property, and they know they're on their property, so they put a fence on their property. That's what was communicated to me. So now you have a dispute between someone saying, my fence is on my property, and somebody else saying, your fence is not on your property.
Don't they drive those stakes in on their own to identify property?
Certain times they do. Sometimes they do. I mean, if, if a survey was to be done here, we would get new pins. But that whole area is literally built on the old dump. It should be the old dump down there.
I can vouch for that, Chris.
Yeah, absolutely.
I bet you I pulled a five gallon panel full of spark plugs out in my garden.
What?
Yeah, I'm not kidding.
We dig a water break down there, there's, put the cars and all kinds of stuff, we pull up, yeah.
And what year was this in existence?
Before I was alive, I can tell you that.
Before I was alive? I never heard of that.
Any further discussion on this? Again, I don't...
I would just like us to look at that again, the fence thing, and maybe make a requirement for people to approve a survey. I, I know that's expensive, but at the same time, if there's pins in there, there's proof of survey. Because they shouldn't be able to, a resident to come in and say, this is where we're falling short.
So, you're saying they should have, they should have an ordinance that you're gonna put a fence up, survey.
Well, I, if, if you have pins, and you can prove that you have, that your lot was done, and you, you can show where those survey markers are, that's already done, I don't think the person should have to redo it, but there should be proof of lot lines.
There was a lady that put up a fence in the alleyway in between third and fourth, and she did go out and get a survey done before she put it up. So, there are some people already doing that, you know? It's mostly new, new buyers that, that do that.
Well, I think in a city environment, uh, I mean, anything like that, I mean, we have to get billing permits and stuff like that, so I do believe it should be on the person putting up a fence to do their due diligence, and as verified that, that is their property line.
To be able to prove it.
Yeah.
That's true, you know, there's different kinds of fences, so, if I'm just gonna put an expensive fence up, that'd be kind of silly, not get a survey done, there's nowhere they are. Like you're talking chicken wire, but some stakes, that's a, that's kind of a nothing fence. So there's not, you gotta take that down, there's not gonna be a lot of expenses like that either.
Oh, wow.
And I think that's part of the problem here.
Is there another fence beyond that? I mean...
Yes.
Because I thought there was a taller fence.
Yep.
She does have a chain link fence around a portion of her properties.
And, and now there's a sunscreen that's being used as a, sort of a fence, that's about ten feet off the ground, strung between a couple of trees in the alley as well. And I don't know if those are in the alley or on her property. Like I said, I'm asking you guys to help me out with this, because we're just gonna keep having these issues. And I have a police report from about four weeks ago, when she told the officer, quoted, telling him, I've been getting a survey done in the next two weeks. And it's not, it didn't happen. So she can keep telling you she's been looking to get it done, but she's not.
It's not, it's ma, it's not mandated by the city for our ordinance.
Oh, I understand.
That, that's where, I'm, I'm saying moving forward, we should be looking at that.
I know. Is garbage or stuff being strung across the alley from trees, I mean, is that?
It's hit this.
A nuisance of...
Oh, once again, we're not sure if it's on the alley or their property, or whose property. That is the biggest problem here, is we don't know where the alley ends. So we don't know whose property anything is on, truly going there.
From a public works perspective, the only assessment we have is, is that if the boundary where we usually mow and/or maintain and/or plow to, and that was my question to Phil. And it's your interpretation that it's at that boundary?
It's, well, that's my interpretation, yeah.
Well, uh, to me, it seems like something should put forward a motion that we spend the money for that, and then decide whether we're gonna do that or not. Myers?
Well, I'm kinda worried about the precedent too, that Melissa brought up to do with this. If we pay for the, the survey, how many other fences and alleys are we going to have to pay for?
I, let me just vote it up or down.
Yeah, hold on. I don't know about the precedence, because, do we have anybody else in town that is, you know, obstructing a resident from using public street, basically, that has been using for thirteen years, and I don't know that that's happening anywhere else.
Yeah, there are other issues.
We have had other issues. Unfortunately.
And how are they resolved?
Some of them haven't been resolved.
Some of them are unresolved, some have been surveys from the property owners. And with it, the council is not engaged in...
And, and like I said, it's, it's not just about the fence, it's the tent, and then, you know, what's gonna be next? It's just, if there's ongoing issues here, and this is one, one area where you guys could help us.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is there, in, other property owners along there that would be willing to, um, do a survey, you know, have it surveyed, and share the expense with you?
We've discussed it, nobody really has the money right now. Um, I'm looking at selling personal properties in preparation to take this on myself, if that's what needs to be done. But like I said, I'm gonna be, you know, filing some paperwork with the courts to seek reimbursement from somebody. I gotta sp-... I gotta spend the money to regain access to something like this, that's, it doesn't feel like it, I don't feel like it should be my responsibility to pay for it. I'm gonna do what I gotta do. Uh, you know, like I said, the, the quote that we got is also to, uh, help the neighbor out that's got a fence in her backyard. Because, uh, you know, the neighbor that, that put this fence up thinks they own, you know, basically eight feet into the neighbor's yard as well.
The neighbor being the one thirty-one?
One thirty-five, no, Jenny. One thirty-five, seventh street.
Well, I do think we should be clear that this, this survey quote that we got is only for the alley, it doesn't address that issue.
Yep, I'm not trying to fight their battles.
Understand.
Further discussion, motions.
I guess further discussion would be if, if we don't know where our alley is, that would be our responsibility to know where our alley is. And if that's in question, I think that, then we should get a survey. That's not setting precedents, if we don't know where our alley is and we don't have markers in our alley, we should know what is our power problem. I'm just saying that's what I, what I believe is that if we don't know where our alley is, then we should know where our alley is and that has nothing to do with Mr. Bender coming here. How do I wanna do that for every alley? But no, but this is where we have a major issue. So I'd make that motion to survey the alleyway.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is the Moose Lake Association Lease Agreement Memorandum.
Oh, yes, so in that couple packet is the, is an MOU to the existing lease agreement between the, uh, Mulaha and the City of Moose Lake. What this does is extends ice through, um, the fall season. So we tried this in spring, we did an MOU that extended ice past our, our normal lease terms in the spring to allow for additional practices, um, some training purposes, and then the hockey association was able to sell ice time to help, um, recruit monies to, um, go towards the financing for the compressors, their half of the compressors. So that went really well, um, they are now coming back with the same request for the fall. Um, so extending it out a little bit, or putting ice in a little bit earlier than normal. I think it's important to mention that this is kind of a test period, a test run. Uh, a couple of things or accommodations have been included, um, with this agreement. And so the ice would go in, um, in mid-August. The ice would not be lined or painted or have logos or anything of that nature. Um, going to test to see whether or not it's viable with the new compressor systems to have ice in a little bit earlier. Um, if it's going well, the hockey association does have things lined up for training and leagues, a men's league, I believe, um, things like that. Um, in addition, from a city perspective internally, we've talked about if the ice goes in early, you would bring on arena staff early and do training on that sheet of ice, um, earlier in preparation for the season. This ice would then be removed at the expense of the hockey association with time and volunteers and assistance. Public Works does a little bit as well. Um, we would have September events that are normally scheduled at the end of September in the arena, and then the official ice would go back in. Essentially, that is the request that's coming forward to the city from the hockey association. It's very close to, uh, what occurred in the spring, um, but just in the fall seasons. This only binds us for trying it one time to see if it's something that's doable or not. Um, we've talked about taking advantage of it for training and is there anything I'm missing, Phil, from our discussions with the hockey association?
I don't believe so.
My concern.
My concern would be it would, if it could hit the ice and the building could handle the extreme heat in August. September probably alright, but August, I forget in August, it's usually the hottest month of the year.
That was my concern too.
We talked about it, we talked about looking at the weather, so if this MOU were to be approved, we talked about looking at the weather in those first mid-weeks in August and making a determination with the hockey association, like it, it's ninety degrees out, this isn't gonna work. Or the temperatures are a little cooler, the forecast is a little cooler, let's give it a go. Um, I think everybody's on the same page that this may not, this may not be viable and it might change year to year. Um, but engaging in these types of, um, arrangements just kind of helps everybody sort out what we're working with, with the new compressors. What's viable, what's not, can they make money? If they can't make money and it's not assisting them with their ultimate goal of, um, helping pay for the financing for the compressors, they won't wanna do it either. It's a lot of volunteer time, they're taking on a lot of, a lot of expenses from staffing and things of that nature. Whereas, um, it won't be, um, feasible for them or worthwhile for them to continue to engage in this, so another trial.
What kind of load is this on the compressor?
Great question.
We don't know.
My concern would be, I think it'll be super expensive to put ice in in August to the buildings.
They even said.
Extending it in the, in the spring is one thing, because it's already in there and frozen and cold. But to cool that building out would take a lot of energy to cool it off.
They stayed in here, April fifteenth is probably the latest the ice should be in Moose Lake due to the lumped compensation. And we're now looking at August.
No, so that was for the, that was for the, the back half of the season, but that was for the spring trial. So we tried the same, we signed an MOU, did the same trial for.
I understand that, but I'm saying if we're looking at April being an issue, August is gonna be a huge issue.
Potentially.
I don't think September might be too, that's usually, very worn in September.
And ultimately, if, if it, if we're taxing these, the new system so much just to try to put ice in to make a little bit extra money, I, I'm concerned that. It's a new system.
I know other arenas have ice year round, but they have the humidifiers and the other equipment to.
Don't accept that, yeah.
They put on the big moisture all to the building.
Yeah, would there be a mold concern?
Um, we did talk about bringing down the humidity in the building, um, but I cannot speak to them. We did ask a representative to, to, to be here as well, and I know they have a lot of conflicts, so I have right now, so. But for the request.
Could we table this until next month and have somebody else come in and talk? Or is it too late that, I suppose they wanna get these camps and things set up?
Are there other hockey rinks that are doing this? That have ice in August that we could talk to and see what kind of a load it's to?
Are there other arenas doing this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Club Day keeps ice year round, Revital keeps ice year round, but they have different, they have different facilities that we have.
Correct.
What would be equivalent, would Carlton's be equivalent to ours?
That's a great question.
I'm not sure if they are even artificial ice, or they might be just winter ice. I'm not sure if they have a plan for it.
I'm not sure, I, I totally understand what you're talking about, Richard.
They may, but I don't think that they put ice in either, because they didn't use locators, mostly there. I mean, I'm not against trying it for a year.
Yeah, the city's gonna be paying for this, though, right?
Where all the utility parks, but it's gonna be.
Big, big utility bill.
Just to cool the place down?
We don't.
I know we don't know, but I mean.
We don't know.
You don't make snowballs in August.
Um. But from a, uh, electric utilities standpoint, the city is still under the agreement with water and light, so we would not be footing a bill for the electric utility this season. But we could move forward.
We have a cap on that.
Correct.
So hypothetically, if the bill goes up twenty, thirty thousand, the citizens in Moose Lake are paying for that. If it's over that one eighty.
Uh, we're, we're still under the three, the.
Three years at a max of one eighty per year, I don't think, so if it goes, if we're spending a lot more than that.
I have a big concern about mold, like, I just, humidity, mold.
Further discussion, motions. Take no action.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Phil, what, what is your thought about knowing the ice and the arena the best out of, are you ever in it? Or maybe?
I have huge concerns of the building holding temperature. I understand and I really appreciate their willingness to try to do what they're doing, because they were a huge partner in that project. I agree with you, no one sees a brand new system ran into the ground and taxed that hard. Because that's what we're doing.
My main thought of it was, you know, the more you use it, the sooner it's gonna wear out. We just got done going through a big process to get all this new stuff in there and it's all very expensive.
I would rather see them have the camps instead of putting practice ice down, taking it out and putting it back in. When we need to put it back in to start earlier, have your camp before that, and then it's in the fall.
There's an event, Oktoberfest.
Oh, Oktoberfest, that's right.
It's an annual event in the arena, and so we, we've always put in ice after that event.
Yeah.
It's, it's a difficult scenario, they're invested in the compressors as well, they covered half the cost.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, they're looking to recoup some of those monies, but is this the, is this the best solution? You know, that's, it worked in the spring, I don't know that it works the same in the fall.
And I would say this is summer.
Yeah, understood, yeah.
It's the summer solstice, so we're not in the fall.
Where do these kids come from to the camp, are they local kids?
I wish we had representation from the association requesting this tonight.
Because this is mostly.
So it says the band number twelve UN high school age skaters have, oh, that's what they did in the spring, so they're looking to replicate that. My understanding is that it's a camp for local kids around the community, uh, not specific to Moose Lake, but the hockey association's reach.
Which is what Hinkley, Carlton?
Correct, Barnum.
I think, yeah, I think Hinkley, Carlton.
Hinkley, Carlton, Cromwell, Moose Lake, Willow.
Any movement on it? There's nothing, moving on. To the playground, it's an old school playground, playground discussion.
You asked one.
Well, First National Bank original, arena digital sign advertisement.
Ah, yes, with the digital sign on the arena comes some more opportunities for us to generate some ad revenue. Uh, this is in your packet, it's just a form that we came up with. Um, so this already went by the park board, they recommended that we go through with it. Uh, one week, hundred bucks, two weeks, two hundred bucks, if you do four weeks, get a little bit of a cut, three hundred and fifty bucks. So, pretty self-explanatory. Need a vote on this to add to the fee schedule.
Any discussions, motions?
I have one question.
Yeah, clearly.
You're the one that would set up the, the ad?
Yep, that's a great question, so with all these great things that we're doing, and it's awesome, uh, comes extra responsibilities. So this would be a combination of Taylor and myself putting on there, so I'd also ask for patience and grace if we don't get to something immediately. So, but yes, we would take that on.
But it would be regulated by our.
Correct.
We would review it, yes.
Yep.
The money is spring Friday, we go where?
Uh, they would go into the arena revenue, revenues.
I'll make a motion to get approved the digital ad request.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
There were two seconds there, could you get that, Taylor?
I'll just decide whether we would.
Decide on one.
Or, or we'll.
Thank you.
Playground, it's the, the old school playground, playground discussion.
Uh, yes, so in the packet the council received, um, some pictures from the old school playground. Um, the current state of the equipment, um, has resulted in an injury. Um, upon being notified, uh, within twenty-four hours, uh, city staff removed that particular, um, piece of equipment from the playground and also did an additional assessment on the, um, state of other parts of the playground. Um, at that time, there were other parts of the playground that were deemed unsafe and removed immediately. Um, this was brought to park board for discussion. Um, the park board made a recommendation based on the current state and current events, um, to remove the old school playground, um, in totality. Some of the discussions that have happened from an administrative perspective and with the park board, um, would be how to utilize the space moving forward, whether it be additional campsites or other opportunities. Those types of discussions would be had at the park board and then brought forward to council moving forward. I think what, um, the reason, um, for this being on the agenda at this time is the park board's recommendation to remove the playground.
I, I got something to say on that. Uh, I've kinda second guessed my vote on that. I, I've had time to go down and look at what's left down there, the broken pieces of equipment were removed. And I, I think that, that the park board should, all the members should have gone down there and taken a look at what was already down there. That, that playground is heavily used, it's, 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 there's always people down there. And for the cost of playground equipment, now, you know, we, we know that that's very expensive. We, we know that the, the wood one that we have in the park is going to be needing replacement at some time here coming up. We really don't have the funding for that, we're looking into grant, to, in, into grants currently to try to find funding to replace that. You guys know that grants can't be relied upon. So, I was thinking, you know, it would be best if all of us went down there and, and looked at that playground to make your own personal decision on what condition that, that it's in. The one behind the school is made out of steel and plastic that will last a lot longer. You know, obviously it had a lot of use when it was the school and that, but I just, after thinking about it and going down there and looking at it, I don't know if that's the right decision to take the whole, the whole thing out. You know, it does contribute to a, a reason of why people would like to use the campground. And, you know, a lot of people from town do, do use it. I'm just kind of worried that we'll get to some point in town, if we get rid of that, and then if this one in the park, the wood one deteriorates to a point, and then we can't get grant funding, where are we going to get the funding? We, we also don't know what the cost would be, you know, for, for a new playground, I, they are very expensive, I know that, you know. So I, I hate to second guess the, the park board's decision, but that's, that's where I, where I'm sitting at it myself right now. I just think that we should all take a, take a look at that and make our, our own opinion before we go ahead and take it out. Because once it's gone, it's gone, but also, you know, like they. But also, you know, like they said, if it was removed, there is some advantages of that too, by possibly putting in some more campsites there. As Phil brought up, there's how many, there was three or four campsites, four, that are hard to access down there, or maybe that would be a place to move those. But, uh, I, I just think we should think about that before we go and make a motion today to get rid of it completely.
Any other discussion? Chris?
I, I mean, I've been down there with my grandchildren and, um, I've been having the issues. What, Phil, when your people looked at it, um, what was their assessment of the parts? And, I mean, obviously they took down the pieces that they thought were unsafe, but is there a company that could come and, and, uh, give it a once-over, or?
So Taylor and I went down and looked at it. Um, you're more into this than I am. I haven't had little kids for a long time.
Um, so my initial assessment of it was that, um, the plastic that's covering many of the platforms and the stairs are cracking, um, and including the ladder. Those are what you would call pinch points, um, for kids. Um, so those are deteriorating, and that's not something that can be replaced. Is it terrible right now? No, but it's getting there. Um, in addition, it is a very popular site for vandalism. Um, it seems as if there were kids that came down there with a torch and burnt holes in some of the plastic. It also appears that they used some sort of saw, sawzall of some sort, to cut holes in some of the slides. Um, so, um... Maybe it's not necessary to get rid of it right this moment, but it would be a preventative measure to get rid of it, um, before somebody else gets hurt.
The incident has been turned over to the city's insurance company, and I'm not going to speak anymore on that. Um, so now that we have been made aware from a city perspective, um, we need to make sure that we are continuing to monitor the state and, and remedy any issues immediately to prevent future injury. Once you are notified, you then are obligated to respond. So we've done that, however, a lot of the pieces down there that do have burns and cracks and things of that nature, there was no immediate remedy for those, because they're, and you'd be taking down the, all the slides, you'd be taking down ladders and then things of that nature, those are still there. So that is a, a concern, um, that should be at least considered, and then, you know, directive given from council what we want to do moving forward.
Any further discussion? Chris?
Is replacing those plastic, I know you're saying talk about vandalism and stuff, but is, would replacing those plastic parts, um, be cheaper than having to buy a new, so instead as a whole?
I don't know if we can get replacement for the, the covers for the platforms, but I know, like, the slide was a-
Four or five thousand dollars, that's not-
Five thousand dollars, sorry.
I guess I didn't notice those things when I was down there. I should, I'll, I should go down there and, and look again.
I think you need to go play on that.
At first glance, it honestly looks super cool, and I was like, what's wrong with this? But then when you get up close, you notice all of those minor things, and, um, Phil's guys had already taken one thing down, so we're kind of at the point where we just, things keep breaking and we just keep taking it down piece by piece, and pretty soon, all that's going to be left is a platform with some stairs. So, um, we're headed in that direction.
Further discussion?
If there's still things that were, that need to be addressed, we should be closing that anyhow. Because if somebody else gets hurt, then again, it's, it's a statute of failure to act, and that's where we're at. Whether we want to keep her or not, so we should, we should be closing it. That's my belief.
Any other discussion? Motions?
I just got one thought on closing it. We, we can't keep people out of the old school, I don't know how you're going to keep them off of the playground at all. Other than maybe they'll remove you from some liability or something.
Well, we'll be taking it apart.
Yeah.
Unless there's money for putting, putting in that, something new. You gonna do that, you said?
No.
Um, I guess I'll make the motion that we remove the playground equipment, as it's going to be, um, taped.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Clearing out, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carry, three to one. Next, rekey, city and community center discussion, community center discussion.
Uh, yes. So it has, there's been ongoing issues, uh, with access to city hall and the community center. Um, they have recently kind of come to a head regarding, um, certain areas of our city hall that are required to be under locking key, whether it be for, um, file keeping, records, audit information, um, personnel information, things like that. Um, so some of the experiences that have been had, um, are, you know, city staff working, you know, maybe at six, seven o'clock, and, you know, having community members just coming in and they're, they're in city, they're, they meet you in the office, they're in city hall, and you're like, hi, how's it going? Uh, they have access. Be, the way the building is keyed now, there's access. So we've talked about rekeying, what we're looking for is some direction as far as how things are rekeyed, um, and, and what that looks like. And I, I've asked Phil to kind of, um, kind of map out some different ideas as far as checkpoints, so to speak, of what should, what should remain on, with one key and/or another.
Thank you. And, yeah, it's really pretty simple, it's just this hallway, this common hallway that runs right up here, right out the other entrance. And I think this can all be considered common space, and then the door going into the office, I think will be obviously keyed to a different, a different key. Um, and then I don't know what you want to do with the other room.
So the, the second area, um, that we're looking for guidance and direction would be the city's conference room. So as it stands right now, that room is the only room city staff has to engage in meetings. I mean, we use it for all boards, all committees, but we also have a need to use it Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. It's our only meeting space, and a lot of the times, we don't have access to it, because other entities are utilizing it. So we want to engage in a, in a way where the community center can be accessed and utilized by all residents. Super important to have those spaces available for different activities, but we're getting to a point where we don't have access to the only meeting room that the city has available. Um, as Phil mentioned, that room can be accessed with the same key as utilized to get into the common spaces in the community center. And so, um, although a lot of people do notify us and we try and maintain a calendar, uh, we oftentimes run into just, you know, people being in there and wanting to utilize that space when there's other city leaders entering. So we're going through this transition period of how do we embrace community access, which is really important, um, and how do we transition some of the entities utilizing the space to utilize, we have this really big council chambers that can be partitioned off and can be utilized as well. Um, and so we're looking at direction from council as far as whether or not that conference room is rekeyed as the city office is, or whether or not it's rekeyed, rekeyed from a community center perspective.
Chris?
How are people, if that's, I mean, that's mainly locked unless you know something's going on, then you can unlock it for people, correct? Otherwise, how are people getting in there that-
Like a conference room?
Don't belong there?
To keep this thing in the building?
Yeah, but-
Lots of people have keys to go in.
A lot more than you would think.
I mean, do the bridge people have keys to get in?
What?
And, there's so many people. Yeah.
So we've rekeyed, then people will have to, like, pointed use of it. Act as, walk in.
Any other discussion? Motions?
I make a motion that we rekey.
Both, uh, two doors, that's-
Yeah.
That's hard to request, that's right.
Actually, hold on. This is going to be our conference space, right?
So we can leave it?
Just leave it.
Leave this, but rekey the two doors.
City hall? Front and back door?
Correct.
And the conference room.
And the conference room.
That would be extremely reasonable. Very, or is it way better than going through the whole building?
So there will still be-
I don't want to get the same need done.
There'll still be a lot of people that can access this area, um, but, that, and, and that's, it's a community space.
But, it's a community space, but I don't think that every community member should have a key. I mean, that's a little unnerving, I mean.
It's really unnerving that they can get up around the corner, to me.
Or in the kitchen, or, I mean, because that's all this.
Is there, okay, then, is there a second to the motion that we can further discuss?
I'll make a second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think letting those entities know that we're doing this would be helpful, so they just don't come in someday and it's rekeyed. And then, uh, make sure that anybody else that uses this, uh, space has first dibs on it, and those times are set. And then, then it's community space, and I, I don't know if there's anybody else that uses it, though.
Um, yes, there are, there are groups and entities that can utilize both spaces. I don't think there's a ton of conflict between the two, it's just the preferences to utilize the conference room. We've started having dialogue, talking about, you know, a transition when we have meeting conflicts, like, hey, we have this other space available, what can we bring over there for you? Um, so we've started to have that dialogue, and we can continue to have that. Um, I don't think there's a ton of overlap between the two, but it would just be transitioning things over to the community center and council chambers and partitioning the room, you know, doing some things to meet needs, um, for the utilization of this space, but it's, it's doable, it, there'll be a transition period.
Chris?
At the same time, though, shouldn't we be collecting some keys? I mean, if, if these people are using the rooms on days of the week that people are here, what is the reasoning that they have a key to get into the building when the building is unlocked?
It would be really hard to determine, other than self-reporting, just how many are out there.
Took the same approach to that, you're right.
We, we learned who had them and who needed them after that transition.
Do you have a cost estimate? On what would it be for three doors?
It'll be less than fifteen hundred bucks, for sure. I, I couldn't, I'm not a-
No, no, but I mean, I- They knew it was going to be the whole- If it was the whole building, and that's- Five grand. For comparison, that's fine. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, I mean, that definitely makes it-
Much better. I don't quite agree, or we just have one door re-pinned, and that was a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty dollars. Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posed, carry. Um, Moose Lake gravel pit discussion.
Starting on page eighty-four in your packet, you will find the signed and submitted gravel pit permit. So it's in. It's not approved yet, but they, nobody seems to have any issues with it, or do not think we'll hit any hangups. Um, question for you guys. Next month, what do you want? Plans for striping, striping and mining?
Screening? In screening?
Yes, mine, that's under mining, but it'd be stripping first if you want to go to net mining, whether it's screening, washing, pressure, whatever, that's all mining.
My opinion is, we need to be getting at this as soon as we can.
Correct.
I would agree.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Okay, I'll bring in next one.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, Phil?
No, that's all of you.
Uh, Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant Program.
Yes, one in council had visibility to, um, a few aspects of the, uh, application for the infrastructure grant for the Rebel Heights development. Uh, the application was submitted. Um, in the council's packet, I did, uh, include the eight letters of support, um, for the residential development, which was excellent. We did have a lot of community engagement, which is super important. Um, there, it was necessary to determine that the housing development meets, um, the stipulations of a workforce housing category. And so there was a lot of assessment done in the background with the city engineers, um, and city staff regarding, um, determining whether or not that we met that workforce housing category criteria. And so what was established is that the duplexes and the apartment, the apartment building, um, did meet the statistical mathematical qualifications for workforce housing. And so we were able to, in our grant, um, submission, isolate those, um, infrastructure needs, and those needs did exceed the, um, maximum, uh, grant request of five hundred thousand dollars. So we were able to request five hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure. Um, and it is pertinent to those particular aspects of the development, um, but ultimately would be very, very helpful regardless. So that submission is, is in, um, money will be awarded in late twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six, so we'll keep council informed as we hear more. Uh, but that was a, um, a big undertaking, it's done, and, um, very pleased to see the community engagement and support on the application itself, so that's excellent. And, and thank you to, to everybody who, um, was supportive in this process.
And this is a fifty percent matching grant, grant?
Correct. So as discussions have been had right now with the developer, the city would be footing for the, if, the, if awarded, the monies, um, from the grant proceeds, and then the developer would be responsible for the match.
Any other comments? And moving on, Rebel Heights Development Hammerhead turnaround easement discussion.
The city engineers have drafted a proposed easement for the end of the, um, residential, residential development as it stands right now. Uh, this was tentatively approved by the school board, it's been discussed with council previously. These are just the legal documents that will then go before the school board for approval. Essentially, um, city ordinance requires a, um, a turnaround to be established in order to maximize lots and maximize development in the residential development. Uh, we are requesting an easement from the school to infringe upon a little bit of their property to create the hammerhead needed, um, in order to have a turnaround for emergency vehicles and things of that nature. So looking for council approval, and then I'm bringing it forward to the school board as well.
So, is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Carry. Next is, uh, contract negotiation, so we'll have to go into closed session. So if you were done with your portion.